It is seven o'clock and this is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals and our first case is Barisano and it unfortunately doesn't have a number right now, but we will have a number for it eventually. Slightly misstep there. And the board for this is going to be Mick and Rita and Bruce and myself and Trevor. And you're on.
I'm sorry.
You're up. Application for special permit pursuant to all those general laws to alter a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential dwelling within the Seashore zoning district by removing the current structure and building a new dwelling.
The board?
The board is Mick, Rita, Bruce, me, and Trevor.
Thank you. For the record, boy, the sound system is great. My name is Ben Zender and I'm here on behalf of the Barisanos who are sitting on the left side. Also with me is Peter Cunnin, who's the builder of the project. The board may be familiar with this project. It came before you, twice before. The first time it came before you, it came sort of as a joint application with the immediate of butter Reagan because the -- and I'm going to give you, if you don't mind, just a copy of a plan that shows what was proposed before to give you an idea of what we were doing.
I think you all have it. Looks like you already have it.
Yeah, this is when you tried to relocate the property.
Yeah. I'm just giving you the large.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh-huh. Thank you, sir.
So, the first project was in cooperation with the neighbors, the Reagans, and in order to accommodate the Reagans' desire that the house not be raised up in front of them, the Barisanos explored at some fairly great expense, creating a new lot off of the Reagans' lot, swapping that land and designing a house that would go on that side. And the board looked at that and to boil it all down to one sentence, the board said, "Look, why don't you go to the planning board first and see if this land swap is going to work and if it does, why don't you come back to us?" So, we asked for a continuance. We went to the planning board. In the meantime, the neighbors and us, we looked at the zoning implications of creating a new non-conforming lot and how that would leave the properties and ultimately, the parties decided it didn't work from a legal's perspective. So, we came back to the board with a new filing which took the exact same house and located on the Barisanos' lot. You know, same design, same floor plan. The Reagans were not happy with that and the board also looked at it and said, "Look, this may be too much for the site." We actually withdrew the application because we thought it would be more appropriate to just take a break, do a complete redesign, come back before this board, and that's what we've done. And so, the plan that you have in front of you now is for a significantly redesigned structure. These are the elevations right now. It consists of one floor of living space, 748 square feet, what looks like the second floor, and then a walkout basement facing the waterside that has a, just an open space. It's intended to be storage. They keep their surfboards, their motorbikes. You can actually drive a car into there. You know, they want the kids to have a workshop to shape surfboards and it gives them a place to put their stuff. The number of 748 square feet that's -- and you'll see in your package, there's a national seashore worksheet, a calculations worksheet that's required to be filed and the number of 748 is designed to come in under the 756, which would be one and a half times the 1959 number. I think you've seen in your correspondence an email from Lauren McKean at the Seashore, the Seashore is okay with the project. The one thing that did --
Project, I haven't seen anything from them. Is that in this, and that is part from?
Yeah. So, Seashore reviewed it. We make it a policy to copy them on all of our filings. It's just easier for everybody and the Seashore has submitted an email back that said they have no problems with the project.
And in our package?
I don't think so.
I, you know, I may have overlooked it, but I didn't see a letter.
I didn't either.
I just got it yesterday.
Oh, I haven't seen a letter. I haven't seen a letter from the National.
I'm glad I brought it up. Okay.
The only one I have from the Seashore is from 2016.
I mean, no, this was, this was an email and I don't believe I have a copy with me, but I, Lauren actually, I forwarded it to Chris as well as I think Lauren sent it directly as well. Maybe the chair could read that at some point in the hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I see.
One of the things that happened here, though, is that the lot coverage of this has increased. The, the original house had, had lot coverage, had building coverage of 527 square feet of building coverage. We've increased the building coverage to 746 square feet in order to actually take, get rid of that second floor and make all that living space on one floor. By doing that, we didn't need to have any interior stairways down to any other levels. The stairway, you'll notice, that comes out of the property is an exterior staircase which decreases the possibility of people habitating at the lower level, but also allows them to use the entirety of that one level of floor area that you can see in your floor plans for living space. 748 square feet is probably the size of a small cottage, but by getting rid of that second floor, which was in the view of the neighbors, and putting it on one floor, we had to expand the footprint slightly to come to the 748 and you'll probably hear some, some argument from my sister later about the fact that this is too close to the Wesley lot line because of the location of the septic system that you can see on your plan and holding 10 feet from that and essentially centering this house more on the lot. It's going to, I believe it's 13 feet off the Wesley lot line, but we're bringing the height down substantially, keeping it a very simple structure. And if you look at the elevations, you'll see that from the neighbor's house, which is the west elevation, it's a relatively unob, not relatively, it's a very unobtrusive structure. It's a single-story view coming out of the hill with, with three windows, but because the structure is already exceeding the lot coverage requirement in this district and as you know, if a lot's under 10,500 square feet, we don't have site coverage calculations. We deal with lot coverage. In the Seashore, you have to have 5% max lot coverage. This, this site was already at 17.6%, but because it's already over, you can buy special permit if you feel that we meet the criteria, you can intensify the non-conforming nature of the structure and we're acting that it go from 17.6% to 24%, which sounds like a huge percentage increase, but given the small nature of the lot, it's not a huge increase in the size of the structure. The structure's going from 527 square feet of area to 746 square feet of area. We think that Peter worked very hard to try to come up with a usable structure. It still gives them the storage underneath. It minimizes the view from, from the west. We think that in relation to the other structures in the neighborhood, the board has been out there. You've seen the other homes. We think this is a modestly sized house compared to other structures and we hope that we've finally come up with a project that the board feels, you know, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and is in keeping with the, with the character of the neighborhood and will grant a special permit. And, and I'll try to answer any questions I can.
Okay.
That you have. And thank you.
Sure. Okay, is there anyone here to speak to this? Yeah, okay.
And I can yield the table if Kimberly wants to sit.
Yep.
Here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You can read right off of that right there.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Beal and I'm here on behalf of the Reagans who live right next door at 1105 Kahoon Hollow Road. I met you, I was here in the spring as well. So, you did get my submission, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of the Reagan's chief concerns. The first, their principal concern is really the relocation of the dwelling to 13 feet within the property line. That's been maintained from the previous filing, which was also 13 feet. And when we were here, I think the board expressed, no, the board expressed concern about that relocation. Right now, it's a 32-foot setback and that's changing to 13 feet. So, that's, that's a substantial change in relocation of the structure. The requirement under the bylaw is 35 feet, so it's non-conforming and being rendered, I would say substantially more non-conforming. So, there's been no improvement since the spring in terms of that setback. There was previously, I know attorneys under referenced it, a submission and there have been, I think, previous submissions even prior to the Barisanos where it was a 17-foot setback and the board said that was too close. So, so this 13-foot setback really is a big concern for the Reagans. The next issue is the height of the structure. The ridge height is 13 feet taller than what's there presently, so not only is it moving closer, it's, it is going up 13 feet in size. So, so while it's shorter than what was proposed back in the spring, it's still a substantial increase over what's presently there. And even though there is, I would say, an improvement from the spring, I know the March 19th plans referenced a ridge height of 107.25. These plans that are before you now is 101.5, so even though they're going down to, I would say, one story, it's really a five-foot, nine-inch change. So, so it's not as if they're taking off 10 feet, they're taking off five feet, nine inches. So, we did just want to note that. Attorney Zender, I know, spoke to this already, but, but the lot coverage is increasing substantially. 17.6% is where it is now and that's going up to 24.9%, which is five times what the requirement is. And I know some of that is due to the size of the lot. It's a small lot, 3,000 square feet, but it is five times what the requirement maximum is. The other thing that I thought was, was noteworthy is that the project is actually 244 square feet larger than what was presented to you. So, the total livable area versus what you denied in the spring, it's 244 square feet larger than what was presented. So, while they've revised it to make it one story, the, the footprint is increasing and it's quite larger than what it was even back in the spring. The other concern, and this is why we attached the 2016 correspondence from the National Seashore, is that you do have that space downstairs. It's accessible by large doors, has windows. I know the Barisanos are representing to you tonight that it's not their intention to make that into livable space, but I would say that is a concern that over time, perhaps that transitions to livable space. So, if the board were inclined to grant this, I would suggest a condition that that not be made into habitable space. Certainly, my clients don't want it to be granted. They oppose the project, but if that were the case, that would at least address that concern to some extent. So, in reviewing the project, it's more non-conforming as the west side, excuse me, the west rear yard setback or side yard setback where it's 32 feet going to 13 feet. The north side yard setback is being rendered more non-conforming, 16 feet to seven feet. The house will be 13 feet taller and the lot coverage is increasing by 40% and be five times what the maximum is. So, even though they're having changes, it's a tough site and the Barisanos bought a tough site, it's a small property. And where they're proposing to put this structure, taller structure and so close to the Reagans, they still have pressing concerns. You know, it's an environmentally sensitive area. It's in the Cape Cod National Seashore District. My clients tell me that there have been washouts in the area and so I think that there are legitimate concerns about cutting in, cutting into the, into the soil there and to putting this larger structure up. So, certainly, they'd ask that you deny the project. Thank you.
And having had that, I don't think we have any other letters and I don't think I need to read.
I'm not going to read that.
Read this one since we've already gone through that.
Who's that from?
This is from.
Oh, so she's, she's already explained.
She's already explained it, but there is this note from the Seashore. We let Ben know last month. We've reviewed the revised proposal. The project is more in keeping with the neighborhood character. We have no further comments and that's from Lauren. I don't think I have anything else, right? Okay.
I'd like to clarify one point, if you don't mind, just to, to, to address my sister's point. This is actually smaller than the last presentation. We were, this is actually not an increase in size. It was, the last one that we presented, which was smaller than the one before that, had 455 square feet on the second floor and 396 on the first for a total of 851 square feet. So, we, we've brought that down below the one and a half. So, I think Kimberly's right. The size of that floor of living area is larger, but the overall size of living area has reduced, so.
You design a house with a second floor, remove the second floor, and then you get a bigger living area on the first floor?
Slightly bigger.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I get it.
I think we're hiding that fact, yeah.
You're supposed to compare this to the existing house, not to a prior drawing that was rejected. So, you know, I, I don't think it's relevant to go back and say, "Well, it's better than the other one." The question is, is this house substantially more detrimental than the one that's there? Not that whether it's substantially better than the one the architect previously drew. The one the architect previously drew was a great effort, but it's not relevant.
Okay.
So, that's my position.
I understand.
But it's always interesting to talk about it. You know, set up a straw man, knock him down, then get your permit. I get it.
I always say if you can frame the question, you can win the argument, so.
All right.
I'll start with you.
Did you, did you read the letter from the, from the?
No, because the lawyer presented the, the substantial facts and letter. You don't need me to read the rest. No, okay. Very good.
I have a question for Laura. Your client's house, is that a summer rental?
You know, I would have to track them. I know that they rented it out.
I believe it is a summer rental, right? As all the houses around there? Okay.
Yeah, I would have to track them. I know that they have rented it out in the past. I don't know what their intentions are to go forward and I don't know how they're using. I know that they've also stayed there for the time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's funny, Ben.
You have to speak in the microphone.
I was, you know, the first project that you brought, the size of the, it hadn't made it any bigger, but you're increasing the non-conformity on a lot. That I have an issue with. I don't have an issue, I like the actual house that you want to draw, but I haven't, on a tiny little lot like that, to go from the percentage you're going to to where you want to go now, we've turned people down for less than that and it really is, I happen to agree with my colleague that you're presenting something that got turned down before, which is irrelevant and you're kind of going bigger on the, the lot size. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I'm just telling you what my concerns are. That's about the only concern I have.
Rita?
Well, I will say that it does, the new structure would definitely be much better than what's there right now, which is basically a derelict and dangerous structure. I don't have too much more to say than that.
You want to go later?
Let me?
You want to go later?
No, I'd go now.
Go now.
I'm just, I can argue with me, tell me I'm wrong. You know, it's, I mean, you know, to me, the question, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here and we're going to consider all of them, but, you know, the fundamental question is, is whether this house, 13 feet taller than the existing house and about 13 feet closer to the lot line, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing house. I don't know how I feel about it, but, and if I've stated something wrong, correct me, Ben, because.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
You know, I'm challenged by reading drawings and plans and what have you. I mean, your architect, Mr. Cunnin, is it, you know, gave us a drawing that says the ridge is 13 feet higher, so. But, you know, this, this house is really close to the line where I think the board could go either way.
Understood.
I think you folks ought to get together and work this out because someone's going to be really unhappy if we have to go to a decision and if that results in appeal, then everyone's going to be unhappy except for the lawyers because that'll go, I mean, you, you can advise your clients, but, you know, I've seen them go on for two or three years and, and with all the uncertainty and I, I would, you know, I really think this is something that calls for the parties working it out and coming back to us with a plan that everyone will be unhappy with, but everyone can get on with their lives because, you know, either they're going to get this house or they're not going to get it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's really close. I think you know that and I think counsel for the Reagans knows that. And, you know, it's, it's a tou, it's tough to do anything on a 3,000-square-foot lot. It just is.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
Well, and I'm going to kind of hold back until everybody's done.
Let me?
I'm going to hold back until everybody's done.
Sure.
I don't want to, I don't want to try to counterpunch the board, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have two questions for you. The first is, what's the, the distance between where your proposed house is and the proposed house of the Reagans?
I, the best plan to look at for that is the plan that I just handed the board. It's this one that was the initial proposal because it shows the relative locations of the houses in the neighborhood. Well, do you have this plan right here? It shows.
I, I just didn't bring a scale and a calculator.
And I, I can't, I can't tell you looking at that. I can.
Yeah, they are really close.
The trouble with this plan is it shows the, the new house moving in the opposite direction and what we don't see is what it is now moving in this direction.
No, no, I understand. I, I think this plan is only instructive insofar as it shows the, the relative placement of the Reagan's house to, to the current lot, but I couldn't tell you what that number is.
But we don't, or at least I can't tell what the new, the proposed tonight is relative to that plan.
Well, I think, the only way to do that is to look at that and look at it with this plan right here.
Yeah, I know, and I can't read this plan, which I've been telling everybody all along.
Yeah, I, I think the house is moving, it's.
Moving closer to that house.
It's 27 feet, it's 27 feet off that rear lot line. It's, the house is, the deck is 27, the house is 32, so the house is going.
Yeah, okay, which is.
Roughly 11 feet closer.
This, and so it's going here.
Or 12 or 13 feet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could be more.
Okay, yeah, so it's 20 even.
I'm, I'm sorry, well, I can't answer that question tonight. I, I could get that for you, but I can't answer that tonight.
And, and my second question is, it deals with, is this an increase in a non, in the non-conforming use? I'd just be curious to know what, what the, the difference is in terms of the setback violations that you have now versus what the setback violations would be if, if we approve this, this plan. I don't.
Well, I.
In other words, I just, I just, because the, one of the questions is, are we increasing the non-conformity?
I don't, I don't.
And one way to figure that out is just a simple mathematic formula. What is it?
Well, I think if you're, if you're suggesting that we, we add up the totality of the non-conformity, I'm, we've never done that before. We could.
That's what I'm asking for.
And, and I could certainly do that calculation. We've never done that before. I, I have to say, there is an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure insofar as volume is being increased within the setback requirements and, and you have to remember in this district, it's 35 feet from interior outlines and 50 feet from the road. There's an increase in the non-conforming nature of the westerly setback and in the northerly setback. And there's an increase in the non-conforming nature of the lot coverage, all of which are fairly common increases that we see in National Seashore small lots. I, I think the problem that we have with this application, and I'm going to address Mr. Drucker's thing about getting together with, with the Reagans in a second, is that when you have lots in this particular neighborhood, primarily, and some other neighborhoods in Wellfleet where you have undersized lots and you have setback non-conformities, there's really only one way you can go, which is up. And so, you can keep your lot coverage and you can put another story on your property, which is very, very common in Wellfleet. That's what we tend to do. You hold your setbacks and in this particular neighborhood, by that I mean the Ocean View Drive neighborhood, it's very common to, to exactly duplicate the footprint of your structure. And you go up.
Can I butt in for a second?
Yeah, please.
Because that, you just brought up the question I wanted to ask, which is why, why push it back on the lot?
Right.
It was, it was, it was to accommodate, it was, initially, the exercise was to try to center the house and decrease the non-conformity on the east side.
Okay, but given that that's causing so many problems with the neighbor at the rear, why not leave it at the front of the lot? Put the septic in the back of the lot? Still go up a story.
We may be able to do that. I could have the engineer look at that to see whether that's possible, to, to put that in the back. And if we could, if we could take the structure and take the same structure and slide it to the east, I'm not sure. Peter, do you think we could do that?
Yeah, I think so. The court conditions here are septic.
Yeah, it's septic. So, if we could.
Right, but.
If we could take this structure and slide it 15 feet.
If you go up a story and if the bottom, if the finish, if the, if the ground floor is truly unfinished space.
Mm-hmm.
And you go up a story with the building.
Mm-hmm.
Then, at least according to this section.
Yep.
You know, all your plumbing is coming out. I understand that if the septic would be higher in the back.
Right, right.
But your floor is higher now, so you can drain down.
Oh, no question, yeah. I, I think we may be able to do that.
Because it seems like there's two big things. There's the height and there's the, the issue with it being moved so much closer to the neighboring property.
Well, and the other thing that happens by sliding it to the east is because of the, the terrain, you have to remember, average ground height is, is a, is a, is a function of the, the average of measurements.
Right, yeah.
By moving the house to the west, what you're doing is you're moving it into the hill, which decreases the ridge height, which makes you higher relative to your maximum ridge height. If we move it.
But you're still going to be under 28 feet, though.
Well under. I mean, the frame height for this house is 16 feet nine. I mean, this is, the one thing I'd like to say is this is not a tall structure.
It is not a big house, it is, at all.
But, you're right. But to get back to what I was saying before is it's very, very common to stay within your existing footprint.
Right.
When you have a house that's 527 square feet of footprint and you stay within your footprint and you're trying to accommodate somebody by not adding a second story, you really don't have much to work with.
Right.
So, so going to 748 and increasing that lot coverage is really an accommodation against height, which is why I've always said that I would like to see a byline Wellfleet that lets you relax setbacks in, for height considerations to, to decrease height of structures. We don't have that. So, if we could slide this house to the east and still keep the structure essentially the, the same size and we have ironclad limitations on habitation on the first floor, the Reagans did reach out to us with a proposal for settlement that included those requirements and as well as some screening issues, we could look at that.
Yeah, I would look favorably upon.
Yeah, I mean, the issue you have here is that, that, you know, if, if this were in the existing footprint, it's what the neighbors are used to.
Right.
They have a house there. You're not introducing something. But for us to try to argue that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood when we're moving it that much closer to.
Okay.
You know, I'm thinking about the lawsuit to come and the court telling me, "I've got to prove that this isn't detrimental," and I can't.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the problem, so.
I understand.
Are you talking about just the, the house you have now shown, but just moving it, if possible, further to the east?
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking about, we're not holding.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about because, look, this is, it's a 748-square-foot house.
That's the suggestion I'm making.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting if it's possible to slide the septic system around the other side that maintains the open space, take this exact same structure.
Yep.
Move it. It's going to be out of the ground a little bit further because of the ground form is different, but, but it's.
But you'll still be well under.
It will be.
Right now, by the way, that basement is, by our bylaw definition, livable space. It's got seven feet of height, it's got the washer and dryer down there, you could finish, walk out, so, I mean, it is livable space. We could condition that it isn't.
You can, you can.
But it is, right now, by the bylaw.
It counts as a floor.
It counts, yes.[1616.23]
Well, it counts, it, it would meet the building code requirements to create livable space.
Yes.
You know, I mean, yeah, it would, but-
It counts as a floor.
Right.
And it counts as, as, from the seashore perspective, because I poured over this today, from the seashore perspective, it counts as livable space.
No, the se-, but again, your bylaw says-
On their con, on the, on those con-
But your bylaw talks about space not devoted to habitable.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it, the basement footnote is-
Again, it's-
It's different.
Every application comes before you, and that, that goes towards intensity views. That doesn't affect the view from the neighbor's house.
I know, I know.
It doesn't affect, you know, so, yeah. And, look, if, if, if it is, we're in violation of the special permit, obviously, so, yeah.
I have a question about the livable space issue. Is that not a Board of Health issue?
It, well, we've got in our bylaws, because I had to spend time this afternoon with it, looking at the footnotes of what I have to count, and so it's, it, it says you don't count basements except if they're livable, but if the livables, if it's a seven-foot high basement, it can easily be converted to livable space, so it's-
But isn't that a Board of Health issue?
Well, it would be a size issue for us-
That's a size issue for us.
Because it's increasing the non-conformity, it's the, you know, it's, it's on the seashore calculations on how much square footage.
The reason I bring it up is we've had, in a previous case, where somebody was arguing on that, and I'm uncomfortable with somebody saying that they could use that as a livable, it's almost-
Right.
Character assassination.
No, no, it's not that. It's just I'm trying to look at the, at the calculations as you put them in that thing.
Not from the Board, but from the people who are arguing the other way. I'm always uncomfortable when they say, well, maybe they'll do it later. That's, I don't like that, you know.
You know, one thing I didn't, I didn't ring before we, I, we're going to ask for a continuance, just, I don't want to bury the lead here.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I have to hammer the fact that the seashore is okay with it, because, and not, not to try to convince you of anything-
Mm-hmm.
Just a remark on it, because I'm so happy when it come in and the seashore says we're okay with this, because it's, it's relatively rare that that happens. So, I, you know, I think, at least by bringing this project in at, at under the 150%, you know, at least we're doing what they think we should be doing.
But it's not the seashore, that's your problem, that's your damn-
No.
No, I understand. I just, I just want to, you know, I'm trying to harp on-
That's only a recommendation. That's not a zoning-
Well, it, it's, it's part of the criteria for the issuance of a national seashore permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really all it is, but-
It's just a recommendation.
Until I get over-
And it gets a favorable letter from Lauren.
Yeah.
It's just a recommendation, but as soon as I get over that 150%, all of a sudden it becomes a-
We've ignored it in the past.
I know you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, could we, could we have a, a continuance with this matter? Would the board consider granting a continuance?
Can I make a comment, though? Because it's more, more to my fellow board members than-
Yeah.
Than necessary to you folks. But it seems to me that we were recently asked by the court to define a neighborhood.
Right.
And the neighborhood did not consist of one house.
No.
And everything I've heard tonight, we're using one house, one person, one owner, and neighborhood as simult, as synonymous. And I just think that's nonsense.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, in other words, and I, I mean, I hope it gets resolved, but, you know, the, the Regans do not have a site easement here. And, and they were pushing like, gee, we, we, we should give them one, and I just don't feel that way.
I, I would have to agree with my colleague on that. The other thing, too, to remember about that neighborhood is, it's traditionally a party rental neighborhood, because it's right next to the Beachcomber. You go down there on any summer night, and there's 20 people in each of those houses, having a great time, more power to them, that's what keeps Welfley going. But we do need to understand that these are substantial rentals, and they're businesses, they're run as businesses, and a lot of the people that, it, it could affect our bottom line. And that's, but that's not a criteria we have to worry about.
Um, to Will's point, though, I, I mean, I made my comments not because I thought that the application before us was necessarily more detrimental to the neighborhood regardless of how you defined it. I made my comments because I think, as the chair said, regardless of which way we vote, this will end up in a lawsuit.
Right.
And I was trying to look for a solution-
Mm-hmm.
That wouldn't-
No, and Bruce led to that.
Has nothing to do with the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was trying to do is-
Yeah, it only took Bruce 40 years of practice to come to the point that maybe we should get together and talk about it.
Well, I feel bad, maybe depriving lawyers of two or three years of litigation fees in the appellate court. That went against my instinct.
Yeah. That's easy to say when you're retired, so.
Well, that's right.
To Will's point, does a lawsuit between private parties, that's their business, it's not ours. You know what I mean? It's just like, because we're getting caught up-
You may say that, but since I've seen one of these cases in a lawsuit three times now, I would not say it is not our business.
I understand that, and that, that is, that's, how do I put it, being politely? That was in a, in ex, in extreme case.
Not necessarily.
But we did get caught up in, but if we-
I don't even want, I don't, I don't want to hear Bruce's take on this, but-
But if we did-
He was in the hospital when I was here.
I know.
You were having drugs when I was here.
I was glad I was there with that one. But if, the point is, if we ruled one way or the other tonight, where do they go to a lawsuit or not? Does it really matter?
But I think there's an interest in encouraging the parties-
I understand.
To try to resolve something.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Especially if they're willing, which is down likely they are.
They can resolve it better than a judge in Boston can solve it.
All I can say is, this, this case is not that case.
No.
Um, no case is that case.
Thank you.
And Mick, I wish you were here when Bruce finally had had enough of that case.
Not enough of you, but enough of the case.
I, you were clear about that, so.
Me, too.
Happy to see you again, but not particularly in that particular fashion. But, but, no, I, I don't think in this case, you know, I mean, here, you know, it's the numbers-
So you want to continue this?
I would like to continue.
So you want to continue it.
Yeah, I, I would like to continue.
So, um, and if you can-
We can move this very quickly.
If you and the neighbors could work this out, it would be really-
We will. Well, we'll, we'll talk. We will, I know Kim and I will talk.
Really a nice, much easier, because it feels like Solomon up here cutting the baby.
Okay.
I like that analogy.
Solomon never actually cut the baby, I don't think.
No, he didn't have to, because they worked it out. The lawyers took it off, and they worked it out.
And whatever your next date is, um-
Our next date is January 9th. Do you want to do that, given holidays? Your clients are saying yes, but I don't know.
Yeah, we, we, we'll either have something in in time for it or not, in which case I'll, I'll ask for a continuance.
Right.
So, thank you.
We'll continue to the 9th.
Continue to January 9th. I need a motion to that.
I'll make a motion to continue to January 9th.
And a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Am I have to write down who was on the board, so I remember?
It's funny, if we had come to a meeting-
Nick.
I'm the caller.
Of course. Hey, Rifa.
It's really small.
Okay.
Can we work this?
Yeah.
I would, so that there's not this animosity-
Yes, he did.
Between-
He did say that. You're certain.
I'm on a line, it's gonna-
Okay, um, we are on to 1927 Davis Corner.
My chairperson, I shall recuse myself.
Yes, sure.
I'm recusing myself from this one.
Yes, that's right.
No one wants to be part. You don't want to get involved.
We're all out of it.
Well, he's the neighbor, and he's, yeah, they can't give him-
Yeah, but they have more insight than any of us.
Yes, but, yes.
Well, hopefully I can provide a bit of insight.
Yes, right. So, um, we asked you to come because-
To set the board for whoever's here.
Well, it's Rifa and, and you, and me, and Will.
Okay. Which is a forum.
Do we have a board for, for, when we're hearing a continuum, though?
Yeah.
Because this is, you know, not the board that was. So do you all have to-
Call it's a doctrine of necessity. This is all that's here.
Okay, all right. So I, you don't have to sign Mullen things? All right.
We're not going to decide anything.
Right.
Right.
True. Okay. So the reason we asked you to come is we just wanted to make sure when you asked to be continued until January 9th, that you in fact were going to be ready on January 9th, and if that was a wise move to go to the January 9th, or if you wanted to. We don't want to continue and continue and continue forever, and it's holidays.
Yes, uh, so, uh, we believe we will be ready for January 9th. I mean, what is, what is the submission deadline to resubmit for that? Is it-
Well, as a practical matter, you would have to get all your papers to Chris-
Yes.
On the Wednesday before, so she can distribute it to us.
Okay.
It gives us a week to look at them.
Right. So the Wednesday is, so January 1st is a Wednesday, so our plan was to resubmit on January 2nd, which is the Thursday.
January 2nd, or, yeah.
Right, so-
Right.
I don't know if Chris will be here.
Yeah, I'll be here in a sec.
Yeah, it's, it's a Thursday weekday.
Okay, so, because Chris, it goes to Chris, then it has to go to us.
Yeah.
Right. But it also has to go to the planning board.
Yes.
And, and you were going to go to the planning board in December and didn't, so-
Right, so-
I don't know if the planning board is meeting in January.
Okay, so I'll have to check on whether or not the planning board's meeting in January. Um, the, the reason that we weren't, uh, ready for this meeting is we were waiting for our traffic analysis to be completed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we actually had a, quite a long phone conference with the, uh, with the, the engineers doing the traffic tal, traffic analysis today, and he should have his, his analysis completed by the end of next week.
Okay.
Um, that's what we're shooting for, and hopefully that will give us, myself and John Kenny, our lawyer, enough time to pull together a presentation that incorporates all of his analysis, um, and then have that ready for a January 2nd submission deadline.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's, that's our current timetable. Um, there are a lot of ifs in there, but that's what we're, uh, that's what we're shooting for.
Just, I want to take a few moments, and thank you very much for coming, because it's, you know, we don't want another continuance.
Right.
Um, for a lot of reasons. You know, it's unfair to butters who have to keep running to the barricades, you know, who have concerns, and they have a right to be heard. Um, and, you know, all the things we've asked for last, at the last meeting, and then Chris followed up, were stuff, and I'm, I'm not trying to be nasty, but I'm going to say it plain, should have been in your package in October when you did the filing. We shouldn't be in December, do we? We are, we're going to make the best of it. Uh, and I just want to go over a few things that I think you or your lawyer or somebody should be prepared to address on the 9th, if that's the next date.
Yep.
By the way, what's your name? I'm sorry, I'm Bruce Drucker.
Uh, Matt Cristiani, sorry, from Align Architecture.
And who, who are you here for?
For, I saw, I'm, I am from Align Architecture, so we're the architects for the-
You're the, an architect?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
I, I work with Trevor.
Trevor, okay, we won't hold-
Our, our offices share a wall.
I won't hold that against you.
Very, thank you, I appreciate that.
But these are things you could bring back to your client.
Yes.
Some of the things I'm going to say, or they can, if they really have nothing to do, they can look at the video when it's posted. But there's an issue. The, your client's supposed to have a host agreement with the town of Welfley. They have a host agreement, but that's under the name of Welf, uh, CC, it's under a different name than the application. I, I wrote them down, I can't tell. And I'm, we're not going to resolve that now, but you should talk to Mr. Kenny, I believe it is, so he can resolve that for us, because the, uh, the name of the applicant that's in front of us is different than the name that's on the host agreement.
Yes.
The, the parking has to be resolved. Um, it's a formula in the zoning bylaw. Trevor can help you with it, if you, I'm sure you can figure it out. It's a, we don't have discretion. We've been through this a gazillion times. Square footage divided by 150, and then one for every three employees. You know, we can round up or down a little bit, but this is not, uh, this is just a formula. We, we, and so, you know, we need to see the calculations, presumably from the engineer or from the architect, and the plan for it. Um, the, um, we'd like to know what the hours of operation are. The traffic issues that we talked about, and again, whether you want to address them or not is up to you, you know, there's, uh, but, you know, you got the gridlock on the Count Hala Road. You can argue it's not your fault, you know, Philippe shouldn't be selling such good pastries. But the gridlock occurs because of folks trying to get on Route 6.
Yes.
Um, and you have a lot of traffic, and they used to, and they don't always have a police officer there at the town. They pulled them out. It's a little bit of an issue. Uh, we need the identification of the principals, because our town council gave us sort of a template, and basically, one of the conditions will be, if the principals change, you have to let the town know about it and perhaps reapply for the permit.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's a personal permit, so we need the ID of the principals.
Okay.
And it will not suffice if you say, well, the principal of ABC Corp. is XYZ Corp. We know, I need to know the people.
The people who will actually be running the store.
Yeah, the people, and the people who are the principals, you know, Smith, Jones, and Brown are the owners of ABC Corp., that's the applicant, uh, that sort of thing. Um, and, um, I don't know, the, the papers I had, and it just may be an oversight and a copying, but the application was never signed and notarized, at least the one was given to me. You can straighten that out with Mrs. Bates. She, it may be, the original may be, but, uh, but, you know, if you can have all this together, then we can say yes or no based upon all the information that's required. And that's all we're looking to do.
Right. I can, I can tell you, everything that you mentioned, we've looked at, and we will have for you in the news app.
Great. Thank you very much for coming in.
Happy to do it.
Okay.
I do want to say-
Can I interject for one second?
Yeah.
Are, are we still interested in having them go into the planning board? Because planning-
Yes. They have to go to the planning board.
I don't know if they'll get on, I don't know what planning board schedule is.
Yeah, I, I raised that point. That's the trouble. Um, it, since it is a development of significant impact, it has to go to the planning board.
We, we dispute that it's a development, but-
I know you dispute it, but the fact of the matter is, it was filed as a development of significant impact, and therefore we sent it to the planning board.
Right.
So the planning board needs to hear it.
We do, we do intend to go to the planning board, yes.
They have to hear it.
Understood. Yeah.
You can dispute it with them, but you just follow the law.
We're just, and I'm, I know I'm disputing myself here. Um, it was, our understanding changed between when we submitted it and now, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Do we, yeah, that, that is the problem, and I don't know when the planning board next meets, so.
They, I, I'm not certain, but I, I thought that they, I'm at on the first Wednesday of each month, but I am not certain on that. We're not knowing their schedule. So that's something that's going to have to, because that would be January 1st.
Yeah, well, they aren't going to meet on the first Wednesday of Jan, January.
Right.
But that's January 1st.
Yes.
New year's day, so they will not-
They will not be meeting that day. I can guarantee they will not.
You'll, you'll take that bold step?
I'll take that bold step. I'll say they're not meeting that day.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. So, um, I don't know what we, do we want to continue it to January with the stipulation that it may have to be moved out if the planning board hasn't met?
Well, a couple of things.
Okay.
You know, we could hear it on January if everything's here. We could make a contingent upon planning board approval.
Okay.
Or we can continue it after that. Uh, again-
Kay, can I ask a question?
Memory is just what you haven't forgotten, but I don't think the planning board has ever given a negative recommendation on any development of significant impact.
So, well, what did the planning board say to you? Did they, or didn't you actually apply to them?
So, uh, we never applied to the planning board directly. We applied to, to you, the zoning board, and then it was referred to the planning board. Um, so it was my understanding that a similar process would happen this time, but if we do have to apply direct to the planning board, we will do that. You know, we're more than happy to.
Now, we, um, if we get any application that says it's significant impact-
You have to send it to them.
We must send it to the planning board and await a recommendation from them, um, or make a contingent on a recommendation.
Although I assume if the planning board just doesn't hear it at some point-
Well, the planning board has always been-
We'll rule, right?
The planning board looked at it before the November meeting, and said they did not understand it for the reasons that we did not understand it.
Right, right.
And therefore, they said we needed more information, and they needed to come back.
Yeah.
So that's where we are with them, and they didn't get the more information, nor did we. So, we're all in the same boat.
Right.
We are. It's, it's-
We're waiting for more information to be completed.
Yeah, the planning, the planning board has always acted promptly once they've gotten the information.
Right.
But if you read the bylaw, the bylaw says it has to go to the planning board for a recommendation, but it doesn't say-
What we have to do with it.
It doesn't say that the planning board has to make a recommendation within any, within any specific time.
I guess the only reason I raise the issue, then, is it realistic that you're going to be ready for, for this board on January 9th if, if today's, what, the, the 12th, the 12th?
Mm-hmm.
And-
The holidays.
You have Christmas and-
They, if they, because they have to post their, I mean, at some point, it should be obvious that, that they're not going to have heard this.
Right.
And it's, uh, and I agree with you, Sharon, in terms of the butters and all, all of that.
Yeah, we don't want them hauling out every last, every meeting.
We shouldn't drag them back in, you know, for that.
That, that would be a shame.
Yeah. Hmm. So.
I'd say, it's up to the applicant, too.
So do you want to go for January, and?
I, I, based on what my client, uh, you know, prefers, we'd like to shoot for the January meeting. Um, you know, I, I believe we should have everything ready to submit January 2nd for the meeting.
So tomorrow, you may be visable to call the secretary of the planning board, Rebecca, I think her name is, but, and just find out if you can get on before the 9th.
So I, I will find out tomorrow what the planning board's schedule is, whether or not we can get on. Um, and if we cannot, I will submit an application for a continuance for the February zoning board meeting. Does that, that seem like a reasonable plan?
Yes.
I do want to ask about, uh, if there's a plan to study this traffic intensification at that spot?
Yes.
Uh, there is?
Yes.
Okay, because it's, it really is a serious issue there.
I mean, our intent, as far as traffic, is to certainly not create any additional issues. Um, so we know that that, that intersection is, is a problem. I know the state has looked at, you know, putting a traffic light there, which frankly, it needs. Um, but we want to make sure that, one, we're not going to increase any of the issues there, and then where possible, um, you know, we're going to try to reduce the issues there, and, you know, by potentially in peak hours in the summer, hiring a police detail to, to be at that intersection to relieve, you know, the, the congestion, not caused entirely by us, just caused by the nature of the intersection. So, you know, that, that's what, that's what we're looking at now. We're trying to either to reduce it as much as possible, and certainly at, at bare minimum, not increase any of the issues at that intersection. And then hopefully, in the next couple of years, the state will put in a light. Fingers crossed.
Really?
That's a, that's a state road.
Do you know what kind of a debate that would be?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's not, it's a state road.
It's a state road, right. There's nothing, there's nothing that any of us can do about it, so.
Yeah.
They've studied it. The data exists. I believe we're, I believe our traffic engineer is going to be using their data.
You're lips to God's ear.
Let's, let's, God, let's hope.
Department of Transportation will put in a roundabout.
That'd be fine.
[laughing]
I don't, yeah, anything would be better than what they have there.
That's right.
I mean, anything would be better.
All right, I need a motion to continue this till, till January 9th.
A move to continue to January 9th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Chris, do we, we can have our other members come back, and do we have minutes, I think? Yeah. Minutes from our marathon meeting?
I think we're done. Do we have minutes?
Minutes, yes. Yes, which you and I brilliantly edited, and therefore, they should be perfect.
Yeah. By acclamation, the minutes are approved.
I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the, was it, uh, November meeting.
Yes, and you were here. You can second them.
Sure.
All in favor? And you can vote on minutes. You can't, you can't move or second, but you can vote on them, even though-
Even though he wasn't here?
Yeah, yep, yep. It's just, yeah.
I love America.
Right.
You're doing, you're doing fine.
It's a strange thing, but that is the way it is.
Back home?
If anything else?
Getting there. Slow but sure.
All right, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.